Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. Mr. Burkey will offer the invocation, Mr. Jacobs will lead us in the pledge. If you please all stand.
Let's pray. Father, we're so thankful, Lord, that you are in our lives. Thank you, Father, for your leadership, for your word, Lord, that guides us. Thank you, Father, for what you've given us in this community. And we're thankful for the past and how we look forward to the future and what you're going to do here. Help us to have unusual wisdom from on high, even tonight, as we look at these issues, Father, help us to do the right thing, the things that you would want us to, and help us to work together as a community in accomplishing great things. And we'll be sure to give you the honor and the glory for it. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in saluting our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Another roll call, please.
Commissioners Larry Burkey.
Here.
Jonathan Irvin.
Here.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Dan Jacobs.
Here.
Raj Molly.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith.
Here.
Chairman James Foez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is offered at this time to allow individuals to address the commission. Individuals are limited to two minutes. If we have anyone who wishes to speak early? Ms. Donovan? None? None?
None.
Okay. So, any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary in identifying the agenda item you'd like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the commission at such time the item is discussed by the commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the council chambers and as well as here in the front table. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each when your name is called. So the first item on the agenda is, well, excuse me, we have uncontested public hearings. If we have any of those, we may waive the staff report if no individual in the audience or the applicant wishes to address the commission. First item is approval of the minutes of the March 2nd, 2009, and the April 20th, 2009 meeting. Move the motion, please.
I move that motion, minute from regular meeting, April 20th, 2009, and minutes from the special meeting of March 2009, March 2nd, 2009.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote. Thank you. Next item is new public hearings. The first item under new public hearings is tentative tract map number 70238 and a conditional use permit 0719. This is a request for residential plan community of 160 individual detached airspace condominiums with 1.7 acres of open space in an MDR zone. So, without objection, the public hearing is open. And could we have a staff report, please? Dan?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. I will read the staff report for the conditional use permit number 0719 and tentative tract map 70238. The applicant is Justico Incorporated. Project is located on 14.3 acres located on the northeast corner of 50th Street West and Lancaster Boulevard. The applicant is requesting approval of residential plan development, RPD, to create 160 detached airspace condominiums and common open space totaling approximately 1.6 acres in size. We kind of corrected what we had there, in the MDR zone. The purpose and the intent of the RPD is to promote residential amenities beyond those which are typical of conventional development, to achieve greater flexibility in design, to encourage well-planned neighborhoods and developments through creative and imaginative planning. The maximum density for the MDR zone is 15 dwelling units per acre. This proposed multifamily project has a density of 11.2 dwelling units per acre and offers a design that is unique to the city, offering a walkable cluster design, a design that simulates many cul-de-sacs with units on individual lots facing into the cul-de-sacs. The actual clusters themselves would be comprised of five, six, and seven units. Staff believes this proposal is superior to a typical multifamily apartment project because it offers the advantages of a single-family design, which, with each unit having their own small private yard, yet with the amenities of a planned community. Because each unit had a small private yard, staff counted 1.75 acres of this private space towards their open space requirement. The individual private space ranges in size from 257 square feet to 2,220 square feet, and only areas of at least 10 feet in width was counted. In addition, there would be a central park of approximately 1 acre in size with basketball courts, picnic areas with barbecues, and a gazebo. Towards the south end of the project, a small tot lot would be provided, and on the north end, a small, quiet sitting park. Staff believes that these areas, together with the private open space, met the required 30 percent open space for residential planned communities. An added benefit and new to the city is the landscape maintenance district, LMD, that is typically required along major and secondary arterials, which would have a new feature in that the 10-foot wide LMD would be split by a meandering sidewalk with a 3-foot planer along the street to provide an attractive buffer and offer a sense of safety from the roadway. The units themselves would employ a contemporary craftsman-style architecture, which includes front porches on many of the models. The interior street design has varying street widths and reduced widths at the intersections for traffic calming. Also, the internal intersections have an enhanced crosswalk treatment which ties the open spaces together. Whenever possible, the houses face the interior streets to help create an inviting neighborhood feel, and the homes would have enhanced rear architectural features such as extra treatment around windows and doors. The proposed RPD has been conditioned to provide CCNRs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which must meet the approval of the planning director and the city attorney prior to approval of the final map. The CCNRs would encumber one-lot subdivision for the 160 residential detached airspace condominiums for maintenance and landscaping along streets and in front of the individual units themselves. In addition, the CCNRs would also include the maintenance of the central park, tot lot, and the sitting park, and all other pertinent equipment and facilities relating to the common space. The only space and control of the residence is the individual private space, their backyards. The individual homes would be from 1,500 to 1,900 square feet. Each home would have a two-car garage. The zoning ordinance requires that multifamily projects provide one space for every four units. Since this project is an RPD with private streets, on-street parking within the project may be counted for guest parking. Therefore, a total of 181 guest parking spaces would be available, 141 more than is required by the minimum. 115 spaces would be on the private streets of the project, and an additional 69 off-street spaces would be provided. Of the 69 off-street spaces, the applicant is showing 55 spaces in front of the garages that have driveways deep enough to accommodate a vehicle. The proposed subdivision has the potential to generate 937 vehicle trips per day, which is not anticipated to significantly impact the surrounding streets because currently most of the surrounding area is vacant. To reduce biological impacts to a less-than-significant level, the project has been conditioned to do a burrowing owl and nesting bird survey 30 days prior to the start of construction and ground-disturbing activities. Should anything be detected, the project applicant must consult with the California Department of Fish and Game to determine appropriate mitigation measures. To reduce potential impacts to the Alkali Mariposa Lily, the proposed project has been conditioned to do a springtime rare plant survey. Should a rare species be identified on the project, the applicant would be required to pay a total of $36,892 to be held by trust by the City of Lancaster for the purchase of mitigation land for the Alkali Mariposa Lily. Staff believes the proposed residential plan development meets the provisions of Section 17.08.340, residential plan development of the zoning ordinance, and sufficient access, utilities, and improvements can be provided to the site. Therefore, staff is recommending that the commission approve conditional use permit number 0719 and tentative tract map number 60238. That's the report. Hope it was concise and complete. If you have any questions, I'll do my best.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And before we hear from the applicant and the public, members have any questions, or shall we wait? We'll wait. Do you have some questions? No, wait. All right. Do we have an applicant before us tonight?
Yes, we do. We don't have a speaker card for him, though.
I'll fill one out. Good evening. I'm Dan Sted with Penn Field and Smith, 42225, 10th Street West, number 119, Lancaster.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. We've been working on this project with the staff for over two years. We've gone around and around and had a lot of revisions to it, but in the end, I think we ended up with a very good project. It's kind of unique to Lancaster, but I think it is a good project, and I appreciate all the work that Dan and Sylvia put into it and Carlisle. And we concur with the conditions, and I can answer questions. The architect was supposed to be here, but unfortunately, he's coming from Irvine, and I'm guessing he's somewhere on the freeway at this point. Thank you.
All right. There may be some questions of you since you're the only representative of the applicant tonight here.
Okay.
Hold on. We may have some questions for you.
Would you like to start with everything or just questions?
If you have questions, if you have questions of the applicant, you can certainly address them now.
I don't necessarily have questions, but I do have some comments that maybe you would like to address. Parking, first of all. Complex as a whole. Now, I heard staff talk about the number of parking places satisfies the requirement, but they did notice there was, if I'm not mistaken, 69 off-street that counted for the cars in front of individual, I think at least two in each mini-complex that counted as the whole. My observation would be that the only person that, those wouldn't be public. In other words, I don't know how many people would want to park in somebody else's driveway and consider that a public parking spot. That would be my first concern. So if you took those out or somehow reduced that number, I see all the parking on the I just look at my own individual circumstances. I have a house, and I have two kids. They both drive. So there's four cars. Even if you average it out and say two and a half or three, I don't know where everybody else is going to park. That's a concern of mine for this complex. The garages are 20 by 20. That's a very narrow garage for two cars. Being a condominium, where is the typical storage facility then if it's not the garage? So that would reduce the number of parking places even further. Can you tell me where the waste management, in this case, where they would pick up the trash and how they would do that?
I can't. I can, the architect is showing up, so let me turn it over to him.
My name is Sergio Sandowski from Nittern Associates. We did do a parking.
Would you hold on just one moment?
Sure.
I don't know if we have a speaker card for this individual.
I'll need speaker cards from Dan Sted and from Sergio, please.
So at the conclusion of your remarks.
Absolutely. I'll fill one out.
Q and A, if you wouldn't mind filling it out for our records. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We did do a study showing where storage of trash containers would be. We've shown, and do we have that presentation? We have that graphic? I think it's included in.
What the actual containers are shown?
It is shown on there. So there's a T and an R for the recycle cans and for the trash containers there. I showed a 3-foot square for each of those.
Is it a common trash can?
Well, they're private. Each unit has their own, too, a recycle can and a trash can.
I can't really see where they are.
I don't see it either.
If I can point, do you have a point out there? I'll make it out standard.
It's identified as TR on the site plan, right? One's trash and one's recycle, T and R?
Let me point them out for each unit so you can understand how. This is a typical five-pack. This trash would be for this unit. Those two trash containers would be for this unit.
Are you aware, sir, that there are three trash containers required in this city?
We weren't sure if there was a yard waste container required, but we can. We can add it.
I think Mr. Jacobs' question was on trash pickup and how that is accomplished with waste management.
It would be curbside.
Pardon?
Curbside. They would roll the containers out in front of the clusters into that space.
So if that's used for public parking, are you saying inside the mini-complex?
I'm sorry.
Or on the main street, like C Street?
On the common street, yes, on the private, because these are all private streets. But yes, on the street.
Okay. Okay. So if that's used for public parking, then how does the trash truck get the garbage cans?
It would be on the street frontage. It'd be on the outside of the cluster. It wouldn't be inside. It wouldn't be in here. We wouldn't ask, nor would the trash service company back out of the cluster, so we could not do that.
Right. So my concern is, since the street is counted as public parking, which, my concern is you already have, you don't have enough inside.
We have 500 spaces, and based on the current standards, we have over 100 more than required, based on current standards. If we were to go above and beyond the current standards.
It may or may not be true, but that's your opinion. Go right ahead.
It's a.
Go right ahead with your comments.
We have, we've counted 500 spaces on the site, including, at the end of the clusters, I heard a short discussion about that. I'm sorry I was late, but one stall for every driveway. We're not counting, for every driveway, we have space for it, and the spaces, I believe, was minimized feet of depth. We do not count two spaces where we may possibly have space for two. We've only counted one, and it's not at every location. Obviously, we don't have enough room in those locations. And again, this is a typical five-unit cluster, not the seven-unit, which is a similar condition, but it's not the same.
Well, I'm not really saying you're wrong. It's a concern of mine.
Yes.
That I feel that each one of these clusters is short of parking in itself. Okay? So that they're going to have to park on the street, whether they have not enough room in the garage to park, or somebody with three cars isn't going to park in somebody else's driveway.
Correct.
But when you put that many trash cans out on the street for pickup day, you're going to have to have cars parked on that street. So my concern is, how are they going to pick up all these trash cans that are on the street that day? I think it's, my, I guess what I'm trying to get at, I think it's a nightmare, and I don't know how you're going to solve that problem.
One thing we could propose, and it doesn't, I understand you're counting those spaces as not being used. What we can do, or being available on trash day, what we can do is we can limit parking for one stall per cluster, or however many, however much room we need per cluster for everyone inside the cluster to take their trash cans and line them up in that area. We'd have to do a quick study to show you how much space would be taken, and we have to reduce, if this is your question, we'd reduce that parking count. But again, we have 500 spaces short on the site, and we were backwards, we would work backwards from that. So if, as per current standards, it says we have 400 spaces required, and we show 500 minus one per cluster, or maybe two per cluster, there's, I believe it's 25 or 26 clusters, so we'd be losing 50 spaces roughly. We'd be approximately 450 spaces for the site.
Yeah. Well, that's just something I think you need to address. I don't know how you solve it to the satisfaction of everybody, but if you can, I think it's something that you need to address on the plans versus this is what, well, maybe this is what we'll do. I think you have to do that study then.
Okay.
Mr. Jacobs, you raised the issue about the size of the covered parking, the garage, 20 by 20 garages, and the question of availability of on-site storage for household goods and that type of thing, right?
Not so much as a storage. I think I'm just pointing that out, that most people will have something to store, so they'll point, store it in their garage, lessening the parking available, so they'll want to park somewhere else.
You also mentioned this, a 20 by 20 garage is rather small, considering what we're used to seeing in typical subdivisions. And these are tuck-under garages, so there's no attic space, there's no overhead space in the garage to store anything.
I'm sorry.
Because there's a second story above it, right?
These are on-grade units, so these are two-story units with.
No, I understand, but the second, there's no space between the top of the garage and the second floor to store anything above the rafters because there aren't any.
Right. No, that's correct.
Okay. So, the point Mr. Jacobs raised about the size of the garage is, I think, well-taken. It just seems small for the amenities that you're trying to provide.
It's just tight.
There anymore?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay.
Let somebody else talk.
Anyone else? No? Go ahead.
I'm the only person on this organization that actually lives in a condo complex. I live in a condo complex. It's very old, and it was built in '74, and it has 28 units. And we have more guest parking available than this site does, and we have problems all the time with our guest parking and filling it up, and people that are angry with other people because there's no parking available. So when I looked at this project, I was really scared, and I think of 160 people, and many of our units are single-story units, and most of our complex is, the population is elderly people who get along very, very well, and that's the only thing we ever fight about is the parking spaces. And I think about 160 people and families with young children and maybe teenage children, and frankly, this whole project kind of frightens me. I think that you really have to rethink the inside parking. I kind of, I don't just concur with Mr. Jacobs, I kind of go a little bit farther than he does. I think more space should be devoted to guest parking in this project. And as far as the trash is concerned, our complex has just gone through a whole, having to do, we had the little garage, the trash cans that went in the ground, and that no longer is possible because waste management will not correct them, collect them, and so we've had to go to a large collection vehicle, which nobody likes, except my husband. And it's, there's an issue with how the trash can comes in and how quickly the roadway has deteriorated, and how that, then you have to save money, and, you know, it becomes very expensive to continue to pave the road then, and everybody doesn't like that. So that's a big consideration when you're collecting garbage, and that's something that has to be taken into consideration when you plan these things. And so I think about the garbage, and they go in three times a day. They don't just go one time because we have three different kinds of garbage collection. So a family that's moved into a complex because it's affordable housing, and believe me, I think condos are wonderful, wonderful opportunities for people to live affordably and own their own places. So I'm not against you on that score. But I do think that you really need to rethink some of the things on this project, and maybe think, give a little more room to some places and kind of come down on the scale of the number of condos that you're putting in this project.
Any response?
We'll have to consider it. I can't respond for my client, and losing units on the site, I'm sorry.
Is your what? Could you speak up?
I can't respond for my client about losing units on the site without discussing with them, so I'll have to discuss it with them.
I have some concerns as well, but any other members wish to say anything? Okay. In looking at your site plan and building footprint in the sevens, it appears to me that the rear yard setbacks are five feet or less on some of the project, actually all the sevens. Is that correct?
The units have, the way they're laid out, is, it's a little misleading to say that the rear yards are less than 10 because the rear yards.
A wall of the structure is closer than five feet to the rear wall. How about that? Is that true?
Let me clarify what I'm trying to explain. There's privacy issues in small spaces, so what we tried to do was set up so that the yards wouldn't look into each other, nor would you look into the units adjacent to you. So one way we did that was by putting the yard, the private yard for that unit, off to the side a little bit. So you have a 10-foot yard, and then if you have a neighbor on that unit, you actually have an additional five feet to their neighbor, so you have roughly, of open space, 15 feet. So yes, you have five feet to the yard, to the fence. That's not really the backyard. The backyard, what would be considered the private open space, is a little bit off the side, and it's at least 10 feet.
So what would you use that five feet for?
Just like in any other unit where you have a 5-foot side yard, it's a similar condition. There's, it's, you know, some people call it a dog run.
In this case, so it's a rear yard in fronting the street, right, with the windows of the structure and that facing the 50th Street, for instance?
A portion, yeah, a portion of it, because a portion of it is also the private yard.
How do you, do you have any treatment in the building design as it relates to the patio pads, which appear to me to be patio pads? I'm assuming that's what they are.
Yes, sir.
What treatment do you have for those? What amenity do you have for that?
For the private yards? We've shown a deck there. In reality, what would happen is we'd leave it open for the homeowner to create their own amenity out of the private space. We show, we provide a minimum stoop, which is required, and at that case, when, if you decide to come in and landscape it.
So those structures, whatever structure or nonstructure, whatever a homeowner wishes to do would have to be controlled under the CCNRs that would be agreed to by the development?
Correct. There'd be CCNR controls about structure, size, scale. We could add that in there. That wouldn't be a problem. We would let them have the opportunity to create their own space.
If we required you to have some sort of aesthetic patio cover treatment in every unit, would you be opposed to that?
We could discuss it. It's only additional cost.
This is the time for discussion, either you will or you won't. If you won't, that's fine.
Yes.
We'll move on.
Yes.
You have one type of housing mix, two-story. There's no single-story.
There's no single-story.
In here. So you're not addressing any type of clientele that would require limited ambulatory opportunity. opportunity?
No, not in this case, no, these are single-family homes.
Okay. We already talked about the 20 by 20 driveway, or garage, which seems insufficient to some of us. In our staff report, and it's our understanding that a project of this type should have a minimum of 30% open space, and the way we see it, is about 11%, excluding the potential allowance for the private open space. Is that about right?
If you're counting only the common open spaces as the common-
Yeah, because the, the remainder of the open space that you've applied for is discretionary on part of the commission, it's not-
Yes.
It's, it's a discretionary authority, not an entitlement, right?
Yes.
Okay. The way I read the section, it requires, on the parking section, under this condition of use permit, it requires one-half space per, excuse me, one-quarter off-street parking per unit, which would mean roughly 40 off-street parkings. That's the way I read the regulations. So, the way I count it, you have 12 on the site for off-street parking, excluding the private streets. Is that about right?
Uh-
Yeah, I'm sorry, not 12, you got about nine, at least on the site plan in front of me. Five over by the basketball court, and four near the tot lot. Is that about right?
These are-
The way I read the code-
These are private streets, so I, I'm not-
Pardon me?
These are private streets, so I'm not 100 percent-
I understand, I understand that that's what you're proposing, but the way the, I read the code, it says you shall, you shall have a minimum of one off-street parking space, or one, for every four units, or in this case, that would be 40. So you only have, five and four is nine, so, unless I'm reading it wrong, but we'll ask staff just to be sure. In the RPD zone, the way it, my interpretation of it calls for amenities beyond what you would typically find in a normal subdivision, that's the way, words to that effect. And I don't see other than roughly an acre and a half with a basketball court and a picnic area, that's about all we see here. There's no clubhouse, there's no exercise area, weight room, something like that, there's no real activity center for youths, I mean, you've got four, and, four, and, three and four and five bedroom units here, so it's undoubtedly a family development.
We, we do have a tot lot on the southeast corner, southwest corner.
I'm talking about children above the age of three?
Yes.
Okay, that, that range between three and the time they go to college, whenever that might be, 17, 18, 19, you know?
Yes.
So, you know, we have a yield of something like three persons per household citywide, but in this, I would expect you'd be expecting a larger unit count than that.
We could discuss possibly a, a pool area in lieu of the basketball court?
Well, what I'm talking about is, the amenities that are being provided are not, in my mind, sufficient to meet the requirements of the RPD zone. They're insufficient, and I would suggest that you need other amenities, possibly in other locations on the site. There's no, I think Mr. Miller's talked about a walkable cluster, the only walkable area is, in this, is in a typical subdivision, is the, is the sidewalk. There's no trails or paths or opportunities to circulate, a pedestrian to circulate, other than on the, the, the so-called public sidewalk. So it doesn't seem to me that it meets the requirements of walkability. So, those are my comments, and I'd like to hear your thoughts on, on it, besides the other issues that have been raised relative to trash disposal, there's no common trash disposal anywhere on the site, but you have public space, so there's no, there's no trash disposal location in that for, for folks that would use that.
We can add containers at, at the parks, at the quiet, the quiet garden and the tot lot, we can add containers, waste containers at those locations.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have two speaker cards opposing the project. The first speaker is Randy Vial.
Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening. We haven't actually seen the tentative plan for this subdivision, we just became aware of it because the sign was posted at the end of the street. We actually live at 47th Street West and Lancaster Boulevard, and you can imagine our surprise, we moved out there so we wouldn't have any neighbors, now we're looking at having 160 new ones. We're concerned a number of levels, one of which is Lancaster Boulevard. It's presently a dirt road, and we're concerned with traffic coming across that road, it, it was overburdened when a new subdivision for Beazer was projected on 45th Street. We're concerned about what kind of traffic this is going to bring in, and how Lancaster Boulevard is going to be dealt with. Is it going to be paved? If so, how far is it going to be paved? Sidewalks, that kind of thing. The council brought up the parking issue. Are we going to have cars parked along Lancaster Boulevard, because there's not enough parking in this subdivision? We're also concerned with what the plan is for the units. Are these units going to be sold, rented, leased? You know, obviously, we have to be concerned with increased crime in the area. We basically lived out in the middle of nowhere, as somebody observed there were no neighbors, and this brings in those issues. We're concerned also about the dust and the debris from the building that's going to go on, and how that's going to be dealt with. These are concerns that we'd certainly like to see addressed as a homeowner that, that lives just up the street, because it will obviously impact us to a large degree. Oh, and, and one other question, is this subdivision going to be gated? I noticed there's an inlet at Lancaster Boulevard, I don't know if there's access from 50th Street West, and I'm wondering if the project itself is going to be gated as to public traffic. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other?
Laura Vial.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, evening, I guess. My biggest concern is, I do have five children, when Beazer was putting in their tract at I and 45th, I came to this city and expressed our concern, because once we had construction traffic coming down unmaintained dirt roads, we had people doing 50 miles an hour from the construction, and we have children that walk home from school. We also had semis coming down unmaintained dirt roads, because we don't have streets or gutters, and one of which took out our fence. If we're looking at 50th coming in at Lancaster Boulevard, it's completely dirt all the way down to 40th. If you have 937 projected vehicles coming halfway down a dirt road to avoid traffic going out to 50th, how is that going to be handled? We also don't have street lights, so we have a crime issue. I've got 160 households moving into an area which is completely pitch dark everywhere, everywhere else. So that means I'm going to have teenagers and other drug traffic in my fields around our house, which we don't have a fence, we're on an acre. We also have other residents that have acres or five-acre pieces of property, and now I have a huge housing tract going in on individual home lots. So my understanding that this was all single-family, one-acre homes, no longer zoned for horses, now I've got huge housing tracts going in, without any kind of services being provided to the other neighbors to handle that amount of traffic going up and down unmaintained dirt roads. So I have some big concerns, and I think that those other issues need to be dealt with, because we cannot have 937 cars coming down an unmaintained dirt road. That would be ridiculous.
All right, thank you for your comments. Any other speakers?
None.
None, all right. The applicant have an opportunity for rebuttal if they care to take it?
A couple of the items I would like to address, as far as Lancaster Boulevard, we are required in the staff report to put in full improvements along Lancaster Boulevard, along the street that we front on in 50th and Jackman. The dust will be controlled typically by watering. The city, I know, has gotten much more serious about the policing of that in recent years. The Beazer tract, I believe, was probably, came in prior to, to the significant dust control. I, I would think that we can work out the construction traffic issues and make, uh, sign hall routes and, and access routes in order to get into the site. That's what I would like to respond.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Sorry, one other item for clarification, these house, or these are single-family detached homes for sale, even though it's mapped as a condo project.
So the, so the, so then the, you're suggesting, or maybe I'm reading into it, the CCNRs would be limiting the opportunities for dwelling to owner-occupied only?
No, we keep- Yes? Yes. Yes.
So, you're on record that it would be owner-occupied only, no rentals?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything further?
No.
All right.
I just, just to add-
Thank you. So, without objection, then, we'll close the public hearing, and consider the members' comments or questions to staff. Before we start, I have one, Joe. Condominium projects can be limited to owner-occupied only through the CCNRs, can they not?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any reason why not. One thing that you'd want to keep in mind, though, the CCNRs could be, could be amended by, I mean, following whatever procedure is provided for in the CCNRs, which is typically just a, you know-
By a majority of the homeowners, right?
Majority vote of the, of the owners.
By a majority of the members.
Just something to keep in mind, right?
Right. Well, depends on how you structure them, it, it wouldn't necessarily be a majority, it could be two-thirds, it could be 80%, it could be whatever, whatever we might want to direct you, hm? Since, since those CCNRs and, and controlling documents are yet to be created and reviewed by the city attorney and the planning director, right?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody got questions, staff? Question came up on the parking, relative to the off, off-street parking, I think I raised it, relative to 40 spaces of off-street parking under the RPD. Is that, am I reading it right, or am I reading it not so right?
Well, they're proposing to park on the private streets.
I understand what they're proposing, notwithstanding what they're proposing, it requires 40 spaces-
That's correct.
-off-street parking.
That's correct.
And it's in the commission's purview to accept on-street, on-private-street parking as, within that count, as the applicant has applied for.
That's correct.
But we don't have to.
It's, it's up to your discretion.
Anyone else? Okay. What's your pleasure, folks?
I agree. I think there were some very important points that Commissioner Jacobs and Commissioner Haycock brought up. If, if, of course, it's their pleasure, if they'd like to bring up a motion to continue or, or deny this particular project, but I'd be up for that.
I guess the question would be, if we made a motion to continue this, would it be, would the developer of the project be willing to work with us to develop something that we could approve?
Actually, I don't think they have a choice. If the motion carries to continue with, with the concerns raised by the members, we would enumerate those concerns in the motion and direct staff to solve those and bring back a project we can consider for approval. So, so if that's your pleasure, we will do that. If not-
But I think we have to be specific, correct?
Yes.
About what it is that we need them to address, not just-
Absolutely.
We'll kind of throw it out there, because I think they need to know what it is that we're focusing on, so.
Absolutely.
Well, I think that our first concern is the parking. Our second concern is the trash disposal. I feel the same way that Commissioner, our, our chief here, I just don't think that there's enough open space at all here for the number of residents that are going to be living here. There has to be more recreational. It is true that this, there is a future school, grammar school, that is projected to be built across C Street, but who knows when that might happen? And so there has to be more for the kids who live in that facility to do, other than just the one park. And those would be my concerns, that I'd like to see addressed.
Chairman, folks brought up the point where they're two-story homes. Obviously, there probably not going to be a lot of elderly people that live there. Having said that, single-family homes, when you have families moving in, compact parking is not necessarily the types of vehicles families are going to have. So I'm definitely concerned about the 20 by 20 parking spaces, you're going to need, I think, something that can fit an SUV and a car, as opposed to two compact cars. So I definitely think that's a, a big concern.
Under the CCNR proposed uses of the project, if, if you have concerns relative to the types of vehicles in the complex, we can direct staff to limit the types of vehicles, other than the, you know, the typical family automobile and the bicycles and motorcycles. If you don't want recreational vehicles at all, you can direct staff to limit that. That's within our authority, if that's what you want.
Well, certainly not. What I'd like the developer to do is, is develop a project where realistic parking on the street, as well as inside the garage, for families, and not necessarily, I, I think we, you know, you, you guys do the creative thing and, and make a project that's supportive of larger, larger families. Not to mention the fact that, obviously, Lancaster has a lot of undeveloped space. To, to develop a project to this scale, I, I think, is, is kind of limiting yourself. So I think we definitely need to look at space considerations for this project.
The garage topic has come up a few times. Can I ask staff, what is a normal-sized garage on a R7,000 lot?
The normal size is 20 by 20, it's clear with no dry, utilities inside, just plain 20 by 20 inside.
And are you referring to this particular project, or are you talking, talking about a regular track that is built on R7,000 lots?
That's our standard, 20 by 20 for all single-family residential and condominiums.
So what we're looking at, you know, on this project is not substandard size, it's, it's average size?
That's correct, it meets our, the requirements of our ordinance. It meets the requirements of our ordinance.
Okay, so I question the challenging size of the garages.
I think the concern, if I understand it correctly, is 20-by-20 clear. On the site plan that we have, there is no identifiers in here for things like water heaters, those kinds of things that HVAC units, air handlers, anything like that, that might be contained within the garage. You know, maybe the water heaters in the attic, but I don't know that that's too practical. So, I don't know how you get 20-by-20 clear if you typically put the, you know, the hot water heater in the garage. So, maybe there's a solution, but, you know, who knows?
I think we're at the point right now where we need to address our questions to the staff.
Right.
Staff, can you tell us where the hot water heaters are in this project?
Yes, on the one side that's up, the water heater is in the garage, open area, the garage is clear. It's offset...
Which one are you looking at, Dan?
Right there. No, I see. So it's as you enter the unit from the garage. It's right inside the interior wall, is that correct?
In the uphill part.
Great, okay. So, in my opinion, the garage issue that's been brought up is satisfied, in my eyes. I don't have a problem with the garage size. The parking, I have some issues with that. And personally, as far as open space, as I look at this project, and if I were in the market for this type of a dwelling, I think that I may appreciate the fact that I have my own yard, as opposed to have more open space. And I understand that that was part of the philosophy of the project. And, so in my mind, I like the fact that I have my own personal space. Trash and parking is still an issue with me, those are the two issues.
I think the concern that some have raised relative to the open space, the regulations require 30% on a project of this type. The discretionary authority of the commission is to grant a portion of the private yard space as considered open space, so...
I understand your point. Isn't it also true that if the developer would have wanted to, they could have taken away the yards and put the units right next to each other and created the exact same amount of space using the yard space, correct?
My guess is it'd probably create larger space, but...
Right.
When you put common walls together, but that's not what's before us.
So personally, as far as the trash, my feeling is that a study needs to be done on how we approach the trash situation. It sounds to me like there was perhaps an assumption that there are two trash containers in the Ana Valley, we have three. So I think that needs to be readdressed, in my eyes, and looked at and solved in some way, as far as trash day, where does that go, and still maintain parking for the units. And then secondary, I don't know how the developer does it, it's not ours to solve, but creating more parking, because we are going to have three and four vehicles per unit in this complex, and I don't see where it's going to be a real pretty sight when those cars are all over the place.
Can we go back to the three trash cans? Would they be required to have a green waste trash can in a condo complex where there's not?
City ordinance.
Is the city ordinance with condominiums where the people aren't maintaining their own yards?
I'm not...
No.
It wouldn't make sense to me that they would have to have a green...
We don't have one.
Green waste container.
If landscaping were to be under the homeowner's maintenance, then perhaps they wouldn't need as many. If you look at our conditions, we conditioned the applicant to not only pour the concrete in the backyard, but to landscape that backyard as well. So there would be a minimum, probably, green waste for each individual.
Now, but generally, and I'm not sure if it's within the CCNRs, again, but isn't that generally an overall maintenance of the yards, not individual owners in a condo situation?
Well, in this case, they have private rear yards.
But those are concrete.
No, only a portion of it.
A portion is concrete.
Yeah. So one might call them patio homes with limited patios.
Thanks, it's a great question, though. Do we, again, need green waste cans for that minimal-sized yard? We've got 250 square-foot possible yards here, and sometimes 500-foot yards.
Maybe somebody can look at that and give us an idea.
Does staff know right now if there is green waste cans needed for yards that size?
Staff doesn't know.
Okay.
But we thought you knew everything.
All right.
This is a good project, we're working ourselves. Maybe if they did a common trash area, common space, it could be a large bin for green waste that people do have some yards, they can take the green waste for overall area.
All that takes space, and it's a design function that's not before us, right?
They also have the garden area where they could probably put a compost area in there, where people can dump some of the green waste. That would be helpful in getting rid of the private backyard green waste.
Can you explain that a little bit further? Are you talking about a common area compost, or each yard have compost?
Well, on the site plan, they have, next to, at the intersection of C Street and B Street, they have a quiet garden area. In that area, they could perhaps have a community compost bin.
So if you live on E Street or F Street, you have to take your trash, or your green waste down there, is that correct?
I would like to see maybe, to investigate, like a community, kind of, you know, one per every two clusters or something, that people could, that'd be a little more convenient.
What do you folks feel about the pedestrian circulation element in this, or the lack thereof?
Commissioner Vos, as far as pedestrian traffic, do you have reference to a project that has the type of pedestrian traffic that you're referring to?
All I'm referring to is the RPD regulation, as it relates to, in the document that's before us, lending this project to a walkability cluster, and I don't see it, other than the public sidewalk. So, that's not my interpretation of walkability. Typically, you see space between units or between clusters, I mean, it's basically a boxed unit. You know, these are big boxes, big squares, little boxes, little squares, with, you know, no pizzazz to them, and I don't know how else to explain it. It's a regular subdivision shrunk into 2,500 or 3,000-foot lots, if there were lots, it's airspaces, but the footprint might be 2,500 feet, instead of a 7,000, or 8,000, or 10,000. So it's tight, it gives me no sense of walkability, livability, it's a tight complex.
I understand the comment. I see sidewalks throughout the entire project, both on the outside and inside. I think part of the thought process, and maybe I'm incorrect, is we're looking at a project we're not used to looking at.
Right.
We don't have reference to this type of a project, and yet, the city has the philosophy, and also, I believe, the legal reasoning to create this type of housing available to the public. And so the folks that would move into this type of a project would certainly know that, be able to drive through it and see it, and this may meet the needs for those people that desire to live in such a project. So I don't have a problem with the walkability.
Well, as I stated in our study session, you know, new projects, we need to have a keen eye to those, because they're new projects, obviously. This walkability issue that's coming down the pipe, I think is definitely a good issue, is an issue we need to look at. All the space that we have, there's no reason why projects should look like Los Angeles projects. This is not Los Angeles, this is our town, it's laid out, we're laid out, we're spread out, whole lot of land, why should projects be tight? I just don't see reasoning behind projects being tight. And I had to agree with Chairman Vos on this issue, as I said in the study session. It's a lot of land, why not give people a little more space, more places to walk?
Just as a reminder, you know, the density is within the prescribed, the density for the land use already applied to this project area, so they're roughly in the middle of it, as far as the density is concerned. If this was an attached project, you'd see a heck of a lot more open space and that, so it is different, so... But if you, you know, there's things you like about it, I mean, there are, you know, certainly some, probably some real good cost benefit to potential homeowners with this, in, you know, in a good market, which is good for the community, certainly. I personally think it should have, you know, you've got a mix of the number of bedrooms, I think you should have some single-story in here to soften it a bit, and to give more opportunities for homeownership, personally. Is it correct, Sylvie, in the condition that... No, you gave us revised conditions, okay, never mind, never mind, thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Someone needs to make a motion on what we're doing here, we've talked about a lot of things, so...
Would it be appropriate right now to, it sounds to me like we may be in agreement that we want to continue this project to a future date, but to, in fairness to the developer, to create a list of items that are of concern to us? And at the point that I'm looking at it right now, the trash is a concern to me. I think there needs to be continued study as far as how the trash is going to be handled. Do we need three containers? Can we do two containers? And even if there are two containers, where do those trash cans go on trash day, so the trash truck can get to them without vehicles parked in the way? And then the other issue that I've got is parking. You know, we've talked about how there's adequate parking in this, but the parking is on the street. The parking's not off the street, and in my eyes, that creates an issue in the neighborhood. So is there a way the developer can solve that issue to where we can get more parking per unit closer to the unit, so the streets aren't so heavily depended upon?
So is that, is that a motion to continue and to address those two items?
Yes, I will make a motion that we continue.
To a date certain.
60 days enough time to work on this? Okay, I'll make, okay, I'll make a motion that we continue for 60 days, conditional use permit number 07-19, tentative tract map number 70238, with the specific concerns of trash and parking.
Yeah, there may be more. I think there are more, I have more on my list from what members have spoken up, so... Open space amenities...
I counted a total of four.
Open space amenities, parking, both onsite and offsite parking, and how trash is handled in the public and private spaces. Would that be fair? Anything else from anyone?
The VLS, I think, came tonight with a legitimate concern that they'd like to see the problems addressed once the project is started, how the traffic is, I do have some sympathy for them with the increased traffic coming down there, once private roadway.
Well, I think you can ask the city engineer, but typically what happens in a development like this, the proposed future streets are barrier, so there is no through traffic, so the paved streets around the subdivision are installed to the city standards, and any offsite, any extension of streets would typically have a barrier, so traffic would not transition. Would that be correct?
In this case, Lancaster Boulevard is currently a public street.
Really?
Right-of-way is dedicated, it's just not a paved street. So no, we would not be putting barricades on what is essentially a public street.
On the other ones you would, north and south?
On any street that dead ends, that doesn't continue, we would put the end of the street barricades in.
So the neighbors to the east on Lancaster Boulevard, who reside on a dedicated public street, unimproved dedicated public street, have the benefit of living on that street then, and the traffic that's generated from anyone who chooses to drive on it? Not much we can do about it, is that what you're saying?
I guess what I'm looking at is, if you're building a development of this type next to paved streets, personally, I would take those paved streets, but you will have those that will want to drive on dirt streets, and I guess that's their prerogative.
Is Jackman dedicated as well?
I don't think Jackman is dedicated currently. I think this would dedicate and improve the portion of Jackman from 50th to the easterly project boundary.
Okay. Well, we have a motion to continue this for 60 days and address the areas, the concerns of open space, amenities, parking, and trash.
And the neighbors.
And what?
And the neighbors.
Yeah, and the neighbor issues, neighboring, neighbor issues, as were presented tonight. Anything else from anyone, Dan?
One question for staff. Somebody brought it up, but I don't think it was answered. Is this complex gated?
No.
Okay. All right, the motion, do we have a second from anyone?
Oh, I'll second it.
All right, thank you.
Well, I think we should also clear up, for sure, whether it can be designated as owner-occupied, that the units could only be sold to owner-occupied, just make sure of that. That would be of tremendous interest.
Yeah, I'll be looking into that.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion from anyone?
Is that one more item after the second?
What's that?
Deputy City Attorney has an item, should that go in the...
Well, I think he answered it previously, he said he couldn't see that there was any restriction to limit the project owner-occupied, he didn't believe, if I heard you right.
That's correct, I will be confirming that also.
But it's the condition of approval that's in the packet already, that they be limited to owner-occupied, I believe, isn't it, Ms. Donovan?
Could you repeat the question?
I say, in your staff report and recommendation, addendum to the resolution, that you presented it to us tonight, it indicates that they be owner-occupied only.
That's correct, we worked with the homeowners, I mean, the applicant, and they indicated that they would modify the CCNRs to make sure that the units would be owner-occupied.
But it is clear that once, in ownership project, like a condominium project or any other planned development, once the ownerships are established and the board of directors is created, there are vehicles to make changes to, within the structure of documents, so just because we've said it, and that's what it starts out to be, isn't necessarily how it could end up sometime in the future, should the majority, or however it's structured, of the homeowners decide to change it. Would that be correct, Mr. Adam?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, okay. All right, so the motion, second, is to continue for 60 days to address the commission's concerns relative to open space, amenities, parking, trash disposal, public and private, and areas, and issues raised relative to traffic circulation on public and private streets adjacent to the project. That's my understanding of the motion. Everybody agree? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries 7-0 to continue the item for 60 days with the added conditions.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is tentative tract map number 70861. The public hearing is open on that. The recommendation is to continue the matter indefinitely. Do we have any speaker cards on this one? No.
No speaker cards.
Okay. So the recommendation is to continue. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we continue tentative tract map number 70861 indefinitely.
I second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to continue indefinitely. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion, motion carries 7-0.
Next item in a public hearing is an amendment to Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code zoning ordinance. Public hearing's open on this item, and do we have a staff report?
Chairman Vos, Chairman Vos and Commissioners, the applicant is the city of Lancaster, and the request is to amend Title 17 zoning ordinance of the municipal code, modifying the expert expiration date for conditional use permits and increasing the allowable number of extensions for site plan reviews and conditional use permits. For the most part, what this does is changes the initial approval for CUPs by ordinance for two years. It would allow the site plan review and CUP, basically currently, site plan reviews and CUPs have a one-year extension. The modification would allow an additional two years for a total of three one-year extensions. Basically, the reason we're asking for this request is the projects that are in place right now are not progressing due to the water situation and the economy. And we have been notified from the applicants that they need more time to develop their projects. This change would provide the same timeframe as a tentative tract map. You would have the ability to have an annual review. It would be a discretionary, at your discretion. By approving the proposed amendment to the current zoning ordinance, the applicants would be allowed additional time to get through the financial crisis and the water situation that we're currently in, that is seriously affecting development, and we are recommending approval of the modification. That ends my.
Thank you. Any questions, staff? Do we have any speakers? No speakers. Do we do have?
No speakers.
Pardon?
None, we have no.
We have no speakers, all right, thank you. So without objection, it's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider the recommendation of staff.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 0914, recommending the city council approval of an amendment to Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, the zoning ordinance in order to modify the expiration date for conditional use permits and increase the number of extensions available for site plan reviews and conditional use permits.
Second that. Thank you. So any discussion, questions? So it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We have a new public hearing. Here's the next item. Proposed vacation of excess street right-of-way. So the public hearing is open on item number five. Do we have any speakers on this one?
No speakers.
All right. Could you give us a brief staff report?
Chairman Vos and Commissioners, the applicant is the city of Lancaster, and we're requesting a street vacation on the east side of Date and south of Jackman Street, between Jackman and Kettering. And the planning commission is required to review any proposed vacation of road right-of-way and determine, and determine whether it's in conformance with the adopted general plan. On the back page, you can see the diagram for the location of the request. And based upon the analysis, staff recommends that the commission find the proposed vacation to be in conformance with the general plan.
All right, thank you. Do you have a motion, please? It's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I'll make a motion that we find the vacation of excess street right-of-way at the location described is in conformance with the adopted general plan.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, please vote, please.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. That completes the regular agenda. We have director's announcements.
No announcements.
We do have a, we do have, we did receive an email relative to scheduling for one, two, or three commissioners at a time to review upcoming agenda items relative to some annexations and general plan changes and so forth that Mr. Ludiki is working on, so hopefully you've all got that on your calendar. We also have a special meeting scheduled for June 29th at 6:00 PM in these chambers as well, that should be on your calendar. Okay, anything else from the commission? Any other announcements, concerns? All right. So time for public business from the floor, but I don't see anyone in the room other than staff and us, so. The, the public deserted us. So we'll still call for public comments from the floor. Individuals have the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Anyone? No cards, all right? So it's, so we are adjourned then till Monday, June 8th at 5:30 PM in the large planning conference room here at City Hall. Thank you. At 7:18.
Thank you. Oh, thanks.
Thank you for your help.